Good evening, all. It's Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P. M. I call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Councilman Becker?
Here.
Councilman Jaikle?
Here.
Councilman Les Gohair?
Here.
President Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Schultz is excused absence.
Public hearings tonight, we have none. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon: name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comment unless the item is elsewhere on the agenda. A note to the hybrid guests, if any on, if anyone on the Zoom wishes to speak during the public comment period, please raise your virtual hand through Zoom as the chat box is not monitored during the meeting and those on the call must remain muted until recognized to speak. First tonight. We have Jody, Jody Rassloff? Raditz, sorry.
Hi, I'm Jody Raditz. I live at one, two, four, five Jeanette Street. And I want to say, first, I want to thank you for last meeting, all the talk about the budgeting and that was something I did not understand all of it, but I really appreciated how you guys have really been planning for quite a long time on that, so I wanted to thank you for that. I do have concerns still about the roads, though, and Park Street and Riverside Drive are just getting horrible or are horrible. And so I just wanted to mention that. But I did, after the, that long three-hour meeting where you all, all the different departments talked, I did ask a few questions to some of the council people. And one thing that I recommended is when Andy Selly, you reported on the roads and how we had successfully accomplished some or finished some of them. For me, as a citizen, I would have rather had that reported on, because the roads are such an important thing to me, is that I would have liked to have seen it said, out of the eighty percent roads that need were, we accomplished five percent of it, because it would have given a much more accurate thought for the average public. Other what, I mean, I know you spin it for how to make it look good, but I think for the average Joe, it would be really nice to see it published that way. So that's my thought, and thank you very much. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Next, we have Omar Pennycook.
Thanks, Honorable Members. Mr. Chairman.
Can I have you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Ochanil Pennycook. Easier to call me Omar. I live on Hilltop Trail, one oh five. I'm originally from Jamaica. And moved here in twenty-ten, March twelfth. I started trucking business. And I was down in Florida at a gas station getting some fuel. A guy drove up next to me, tried to sell me some jewelry. I told him I'm not interested. He said he lost his wallet and he wants to get back to Texas. I said, I will help you with some fuel. I'm getting fuel. He sped off. There was a state trooper across the street. They both pulled ahead of me. Fifteen miles along the road, the state trooper pulled me over. Said he have to do inspection on my truck. Okay, I handed all my documents. He spelled both my name wrong. I didn't recognize, realize it until later on in the night when I'm going through all my paperwork. From there on in, my life is a living hell on the road because of this trooper. I got a load to Maryland. And when I leave Maryland to Pennsylvania, it was a hotel trip. And when I got there, the hotel owner said to me, he can't unload the truck because his guys are not around. That was a Thursday. I said, you costing me money? He go, I'll cover your expense and give you a room free. Said, okay, fine. Saturday morning, four o'clock, my door banged on. He was renovating a side of the hotel, so I thought there was be something else. So my door got banged on. I got up and I opened the door. A guy said to me, he got maced and he needs some water to wash his eye out. I said, there's a sink. He used his left hand to wash his eyes, his right hand down his pants. I said to him, hey, you making me uncomfortable because your hand constantly down your pants. Get out of my room. He got out. Fifteen minutes late, about five minutes later, I heard talking outside. I got up, opened the door, looked again. It was the same trooper that do the inspection on my truck and the same guy that tried to sell me the jewelry. I said to the trooper, can I speak to you? He said, no, 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 you're good. Jump in his truck, he sped off. They chased me to Georgia. They followed me to Texas. They followed me back to Georgia. They followed me to Illinois. Now they followed me here. For the past two months, my family go through hell here in Fort Atkinson for no reason. I did nothing wrong. I got back here, I go to my local PD. Lieutenant Miller. His name given to me in Georgia by a waystation trooper that is involved. I asked to speak to the chief. He said to me, I'm not gonna let you speak to the chief. You gotta go through me. I said, okay. He bring me in, I talk to him. I get a private investigator. He come back, he said, I'm not wanted by the FBI, I'm not wanted by drug enforcement nor Fort Atkinson police.
Sorry, your three minutes have expired.
Thank you. Can I get an extension, please? Please, Mr. Chairman, you guys need to know this.
I'll give you two more minutes.
After I speak to Lieutenant Miller, go back to my resident. I've been constantly watch. My cameras on my house try to be jammed by these people. I'm talking about fifty, sixty, seventy people. I got a job in Watertown, work, working for Rotek. They watching me on my job, following me all, all over Wisconsin, follow me to work, follow me back home. I go back, I have six complaint to my local PD and nothing ain't doing about it. The last when I got back here, I tried to videotape these people right here at Festival Foods. And I got his informant, the same guy that tried to come in my room in Pennsylvania and a couple more guys on the video. This time I got back to my resident, and in an hour, Lieutenant, Officer Leonard was at my door. That she come to give me a warning. I said, for what? She said, for videotaping and following people. I said, I come to you here and tell her that I followed here and you did nothing, but here you are, because I hit the nerve, right? So we, I got upset. So I tell her, get the F off my property, and she put me in handcuffs. Take me down, didn't charge me. Now, I only have two minutes. Honorable members, I'm not a drug dealer. I done nothing wrong. Why these people keep bothering me and putting my family through so much pain? Why? I don't bother nobody here. I work hard to start my business and these guys crush my business. I'm a human being just like anybody else. I did nothing wrong. Why they keep bothering? Constantly bothering me. Like they want me to do something stupid to go to prison. For what? But yet we can talk about what happened in Gaza? Oh, man, something have to be done, man.
Omar, just so that you're aware of it, we're not allowed to discuss things that are not already on the agenda. We are allowed to listen to your complaint. We're not allowed to discuss it. But you can find me, and if you want to call me up, I'd listen to what you want to say. Moving on to the consent agenda. Oops, sorry, Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak? Anyone else in the room wish to speak? First call for comment. Second call for comments. Third and final call for comments. Comments are closed. Moving on to item five, the consent agenda. We have a consent agenda that's outlined below and is presented to the action of the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately af, after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of this, of the council president.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, petitions, requests, and communications. Tonight, we have none. Item seven, resolutions and ordinances. A. Review and possible action relating to a resolution authorizing the submission of a transportation alternatives program, TAP grant application. Mr. Sully.
Yeah, thank you. This particular request is specific to the TAP grant application, but I thought I'd fill you in, counsel, on some of the other grant applications that were also submitted at the same time. The transportation alternatives program is a program that allows us funding largely for the alternative part, and that is, generally speaking, non-motorized transportation. So we've used it in the past to accomplish a safe routes to school program. We were funded for a grant, a little over a million bucks last year for extending a pedestrian path down South Main Street all the way to Hackbarth Road. And this particular application that we put forward was an infill sidewalk application. Essentially took a couple of blocks roughly around each of the schools that we have in the city, both public and private schools, and looked at our map to find the gaps that we had in sidewalks and identified those as gaps that we could fill with sidewalk. In addition, we, we were in contact with the high school. They have a need for sidewalks around the entire outer loop of the high school. For those of you that have been up that way, the road that kind of goes around the back of the high school towards the athletic fields, and that was included as well. The high school will pay for their portion of work that would occur on the high school property. The city would pay for ours. The grant itself pays eighty percent of the cost of the project. If it is funded, we anticipate somewhere in the neighborhood of about two-point-two million dollars to accomplish this, and the city's share would be about four-hundred-thousand dollars for that project. There's a fairly long range of dates with which we can work with. I think the earliest we could put this in, if we were funded for a construction grant, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-twenty-six, and usually you have about four to five years after to start the project. So this puts us probably into the twenty-thirty time range, so fairly wide number of years there for us to work with. The other pro, the other projects that we put in grants for, one, two projects under the Surface Transportation Local Program. One was for North Fourth Street, pavement replacement from Sherman Avenue to High Street. That's a grant or request in the area of about six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, with twenty percent of that being paid by the city. The second was for Black Hawk Drive. This would be new pavement from North Main Street all the way to Kramer. That was a million-dollar request with the city at two-hundred-thousand dollars per hour portion. And the last is under the Surface Transportation Urban Program, and that was a, a program that does allow the relocation of a road. I think we've all been aware of the plan for the Banker Road neighborhood and the relocation of Banker Road. So we put forth that project for funding. That estimated at about one-point-eight million dollars for that portion of Banker Road, and the city would pay about three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars of that. As I mentioned in the beginning, the resolution of support from city council is needed only for the TAP application. That's that, that infill application that I mentioned at the tops of my discussion here. We will be partnering with the school district on that. As I mentioned, I don't think they need a resolution on their end because we're the, the major partner, I guess, or the major responsible party there, but they have been made aware of the grant application. I've been in contact with, with those officials. Be happy to answer any questions that, that council might have related to these various grant applications and in particular that TAP project program application.
Well, I'm just pleased to see us applying for grants with a, with a wide range of dates that we can function underneath to get things done in town.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see how successful we are on these things, and then we got to figure out how to pay for it, right?
And to not leave money on the table is important.
We'll see what happens.
Can, can you remind us when the application is due and when the funding is expected to be awarded?
The applications were due in October. The resolution of support, we have until the end of twenty-twenty-three to file that. We can ask for an extension too, if for some reason we didn't want to move forward with that this evening. The selection committee indicated the spring of twenty-twenty-four, so historically, that's been identified as March, but generally, we get the information around May as to whether or not we were successful. And then, as I mentioned in the memo, this will come back before council a, a number of steps. So the first step would be the state municipal agreement, which we've seen in the past, which is essentially a contract of sorts between us and the state, indicating that we're going to move forward with the project. Then we would solicit design proposals for the project. And I mentioned in the memo that the, there might be some challenges with that, and we'll see on Friday as we get our first round of design proposals back for some of the grants that we won last year with respect to whether it's, whether it's worth it on some of these projects for us to pay that twenty percent to go through the federal and state program of design, which is a little more involved than our typical design process is. So, but anyway, the important thing is to know that these will come back before you at least twice if we are awarded them for decision points and probably tightening up budgets and timeframes and things like that.
Andy, the, the, the Banker Road project is one I get asked about a lot, and in particular, I know, I know that a lot of people value that tree canopy, and I believe this project would help us preserve quite a few of those trees, hopefully, if this is approved.
Yeah, that was identified early on in the neighborhood planning side of things was that canopy and that kind of, that arch almost that you, effect that you have. So that is going to remain. That section of the road is intended to be a pedestrian path in our plan. We're rerouting the road, not only because of the, the nice aesthetic that we want to preserve there, but also it's much easier to build where there's slightly less slope down in there, too.
Well, that's great. And then you mentioned the, the, I guess, generous discrepancy in the timeline, which I think is good from a municipal planning standpoint, but with Banker Road and us wanting to move forward with, with getting construction going, I would assume we would try to move that project up if we need to.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in contact with the DOT on that application specifically. So one of the requests for design proposals that will be coming in on Friday is for the Banker Road project. We requested grant funding for the construction portion of that only, not for any participation in the, in the design. The DOT did not think that we would be able, if they awarded us the funds, that we would be able to move forward with that construction in twenty-twenty-five. However, we have the ability to phase that. So the design RFP that will be coming in on Friday is for Trillium Drive, which you may recall is the, the name of the road, kind of the east-west road there at the end of the high school drive. And then the high school drive has been named Hawthorne Street, and that design will move forward with this proposal as well. And so we'll design the portion of Banker Road that will be relocated under this design contract, but we don't necessarily have to build it. So, long story short, there's a chance that if we rewarded the funds and couldn't get them until twenty-twenty-six, perhaps we build that section later on and take advantage of these funds.
Great.
Andy, you were saying with the state stuff, we have to follow more, have your design clauses to it. Does that like mean a class A to class B building specs for roads? Or is it just kind of?
It, it is, there's a number of different boxes that need to be checked. So the, the first one, and I'm fully in support of this, frankly, we, we need to have all of our curb ramps updated to ADA standards. We don't even have sidewalk on one side of Commonwealth Drive. So, you know, we probably would be expected to add sidewalk to both sides of the road and update the curb ramps. We have to do an environmental assessment of the corridor, which is, you know, it's an urban corridor. There aren't too many environmental impacts, obviously, but that process still needs to take place, and a consultant has to be paid to go through that, that process. There's other rules associated with the bidding environment, so we'd be looking at prevailing wage type work, which generally speaking, most of our work that we bid out is at that level anyway, but there's a fair bit of documentation that's required in that specification to document the prevailing wage laws and the various wage categories that can be used. So it's not necessarily design-related, so we're not doing a better job of designing anything other than, I would say, you know, some of the pedestrian access, but the product in the end is essentially the same as what we would build. It's just a few more hoops to jump through.
Okay.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the submission of a transportation alternatives program, TAP grant application for infill sidewalk and pedestrian paths.
Second. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eight, reports of officers, boards, and committees. We have a city manager's report.
Thank you. The new project lead cohort came to the municipal building on December thirteenth. I was pleased to talk to them about the city's form of government, including our incredible elected officials and city staff. Parks and Recreation Director Brooke Franzine provided a tour of the building. It was great to see the program continue to engage new and current community members. And there's even a few eager high school students in the group this year, which was new and exciting, and I hope that, that engagement and project lead fulfills their requirement for the, attending a, a government meeting. I attended the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Urban Alliance meeting in Madison on December fourteenth. The group heard a panel discussion relating to housing programs created with recently adopted legislation and then had an opportunity to thank Governor Evers for his support of municipalities in twenty-twenty-three through the shared revenue bill and that housing legislation. Tax bills were mailed last week, and staff in our clerk treasurer's office will be busy processing payments through the end of January. Hopefully, most property owners did see a decrease in their, in their tax bills this year due to reductions in levies from the school district, technical college district, and county. The bid documents for the new Public Works and Parks Operations Facility have been released, and proposals are due on December twenty-first. We held a pre-bid meeting at our current facility, which garnered quite a bit of interest, so we're looking forward to receiving multiple proposals and hopefully quite competitive pricing. The recruitment for the Fire NMS chief position continues to move forward. The Police and Fire Commission will meet again in January. I wanted to congratulate city council member Mason Becker, who graduated from UW-Oshkosh over the weekend with his minister's degree in public administration. Congrat, congratulations. And finally, on behalf of city staff, I just want to wish everybody a safe and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Moving on, item number ten, new business. Review and possible action relating to moving city council meeting dates due to holidays and elections. Ms. Evers?
Thank you. So twenty-twenty-four brings many events in this life with us, including council meetings, and we have four elections that are scheduled. The first election would be held February twentieth. However, we are not a hundred percent sure if we will be having a February primary or not. With that being said, Code of Ordinance Section two dash fifty-two allows for the rescheduling of city council meetings. Council meetings are established the second and fourth Tuesday of every month with the coinciding of holidays, but then also the elections. The council is able to move the city council meetings to the Thursday of that week, which is what we are proposing. The first date that we would be seeing a reschedule would be the first week of January. So Tuesday, January second would be a council meeting, which would require staff to put out the council packet the week prior, which, as many of you know, the week prior is in between many holidays, and many people do take time off. So we're requesting the council to consider moving that meeting to Thursday, January fourth. That would be the first council meeting held for twenty-twenty-four. Again, as I mentioned, the spring primary election for February, we are unsure if that will take place. We will know early January if we will have an election, so we can confirm. But for that, we'd ask the council to move the meeting to Thursday, February twenty-second. Moving on to the spring election, which is scheduled Tuesday, April second, we would request that move to Thursday, April fourth. While that is not holiday, it does also interfere with some very important duties that are composed, not only me, but also allowing the council to be able to vote on that day and not have any confliction with schedules. The final request, we'd ask for the November general election scheduled for Tuesday, November fifth. We would ask that that would be moved to Thursday, November seventh. These are the only holidays that we see for twenty-twenty-four, but it's nice to plan ahead. Happy to answer any questions or any concerns of the council?
If, if there is no primary necessary, would we still want to move it to February twenty-second, or would it be kind of contingent right now on that date, there being other things going on on the twentieth?
There would not be any other events going on if, if the February election would not happen, so we'd be able to hold it on the twentieth.
Okay, yeah, that would be preferable, given that most people are used to coming here on the first and third Tuesdays, and if there is not a primary, then.
And again, we would know that first meeting on January fourth, that first Thursday, we would know if we're having an, an election in February or not. As of right now, it does not look like it, but you never want to be too sure.
Right. There's still two weeks left of.
There's still two weeks. And the reason we're unsure is the deadline for those filing candidacy and obtaining signatures is five P. M. Tuesday, January second. So if there's no reason to have an election at that time, we would know.
I'll move to approve the moving of the four city council meeting dates outlined in the staff report due to holidays and elections.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten B, review and possible action relating to an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the city of Fort Atkinson regarding geographic information systems, GIS services. Mr. Sully?
Yeah, so GIS, I think it's, it's been in front of council a time or two, but it's generally maps that we use, and on those maps, we place lines and dots. Dots are manholes, lines are mains and things like that. And to those dots and dashes, we can attach information, such as when it was put in place, whether or not we've had maintenance on it recently, whether or not it is a challenging area to work in. It's a really great way for us to be able to store and access information. Not only can we do that from our desktops or laptops, but everybody in the field has access to that information on their phone or on a tablet. So it's an incredibly efficient way for us to communicate in the city. The challenge that we have with that is that to maintain that system takes some level of expertise that we do not have. We have traditionally hired consultants that can help us out with that. We've got a great relationship now with Rookard and Milky, who's been our engineering consultant for the last two or three years, and we have, have made some pretty significant strides with them in terms of building a relationship with, with our folks that use this information and really getting to almost like a first-name basis with, hey, can you, can you make these changes that would really make a, a huge difference to my use in the field on these maps? The challenge with that is it's expensive, and so we've been looking at different ways of trying to partner with the county that maintains the Jefferson County, Um, and so we've been looking at different ways of trying to partner with the county that maintains uh the Jefferson County G I S system, which I assume a lot of you probably are aware of and have used. Uh, and uh those discussions have essentially borne uh the following proposal that's in front of you. Uh, and that is that we, along with the City of Watertown, uh are going to help to fund in part uh a position that would be hired at the county in their G I S department. Um, a portion of of whose whom's time, a portion of the position's time uh would be dedicated to uh Fort Atkinson. Uh, approximately uh twenty-five percent of that time. Uh, that would allow us to develop a relationship uh with the county. That person uh would be here physically. Um, uh in within the uh M O U, we've indicated that about four hours every other week physically um that they would be here. And I think uh is a good way for us to sort of dip our toe into whether or not we can make this this cooperation work. Um, we've had a lot of good discussions with Matt Zangle, who's the Jefferson County zoning administrator and also kind of their uh quasi-G I S uh expert up there. Um, the M O U that uh is uh in your packet really um uh had just a few things that we wanted to make sure uh were included in there. Um, we wanted to have a role in the hiring process uh of that individual, not necessarily a yea or nay, but just simply being able to understand what the uh the applicant uh pool looked like. Um, we're asking for a time commitment of about ten hours per week uh with uh City of Fort Atkinson duties. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, about four hours of that every other week to physically be here in the city. Uh, we are committing financially to pay for twenty-five percent uh of that position. Uh, with wage and benefits, we're anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars total. So we would be in the twenty-five thousand dollar range to pay for our portion. Uh, and then finally was flexibility uh in the agreement. So uh I did not want to be tallying this individual's time weekly, um nitpicking as to whether they were here for three and a half hours or four hours. Um, we have a goal that is stated in this M O U of about twenty-five percent of their time. Uh, and we'll hopefully come pretty close to that by the end of the year. But we have the flexibility to get on a project and spend more time in Fort Atkinson for a couple of months. And maybe in the following couple of months, focus more on Watertown or uh stuff going on at the county. So I wanted to make sure that that flexibility was uh built into that agreement as well. So uh pretty exciting. Uh, I think it'll be interesting to see um how this uh position moves forward. It's it's obviously uh it in at least in my time here, it's been one of the first kind of formal um cooperative agreements that we've uh undertaken. And I think it uh I think it has a lot of potential, and I think uh I'm very excited about the folks at the county uh who will be working with too. I think we're all on the same page with this stuff, so uh be happy to answer any questions that uh that council might have related to this.
I will just note a couple of things. This uh was included in the two thousand and twenty-four budget document. Uh, staff did identify the goal of contracting with Jefferson County on a on this shared position. Um, and then I'll also mention just the uh in the financial analysis section of the of the memo, it includes the uh how this position or how this portion of the position would be funded. And that would be through the water utility, the wastewater utility, the stormwater utility, and the transportation fund, which is Fund Five.
And do you anticipate that this is something that would get revisited annually or um until either any part of the equation decides that uh to dissolve the 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 understanding?
Yeah, I I think it would be annual. I I get the impression that we'll know pretty quick, you know, six or eight months in as to whether this is something that that we can definitely work with and build upon, or whether it just is too challenging and we need to make some significant adjustments. But I would say by the end of the year would be a good time to to take a look at whether we continue this or not. I believe there's a provision in the M O U as well that indicates some uh termination capability with, you know, notice of thirty days or something like that, so.
I I I think this is a a great concept and um I I I think people need to realize how critical G I S information is these days, not just to infrastructure projects, but if you have somebody looking to do a development or or new construction in a certain area. Um, having that data at their fingertips can sometimes make those projects move along more quickly, so.
Absolutely.
It's a good thing.
I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the City of Fort Atkinson regarding geographic information system, G I S services.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten C, review and possible action to authorize city manager to enter into a contract with asbestos abatement services. Mr. Williamson.
Good evening. Um, in the packet tonight, you'll see the um memo that was produced and also the documents, the the attached um low bid that came in for this uh particular project. So in October of this year, uh city council approved the contract with North Star Environmental, in which they did the testing of the facilities, the various buildings we have on site and the buildings adjacent to us, whi- which we acquired for the for the overall uh new facility project. Um, and as part of that testing and reporting, we did discover we had some asbestos, not a great deal, but we did have some. Um, fortunately, no lead paint was discovered, which is which is good. Um, but as part of this uh safer removal of these buildings and to meet state and federal guidelines, uh this will require professional abatement. Um, and uh as part of that, we put out a uh request for proposal from several different firms. We did get three bids back. Um, and you'll see the bid tabulation in the memo. Uh, Dirty Ducks was the uh was the low bidder. Um, and based on the three bids and the details within the three bids, they were all, they all spect everything as we proposed it um with within reason. Uh, one bidder, North Star, did have, they they had a little confusion in their bid. They bid it all one lump sum, but the other bidders were keyed in onto the fact that we have to have two mobilizations. We need a little work in the spring uh of next year, and we need a little work in the fall of next year, so. Um, the cost of the asbestos asbestos abatement was unknown, uh obviously, until we we got the testing done. Um, so it was not specifically budgeted, however, in twenty-three, uh the capital improvements project budget uh included three hundred thousand dollars uh for planning and design work of the Public Works and Parks Operations Facility. And this three hundred thousand dollars is partially funded through the levy and then also partially funded with an anticipated borrow for two thousand and twenty-four um for reimbursement within this uh within this fund. Now, there's funds available uh in this in this line item and uh to pay for the necessary abatement. So staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to enter the contract with Dirty Ducks for the abatement of asbestos materials for an amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Not something I'd say I myself, maybe ma- many of us would have experience with, but it seems to me when dealing with asbestos, that was a pretty reasonable dollar amount.
Yeah, we thought so. Andy and I talked about it. We thought that the the first two bids that came in were actually fairly reasonable. This bid was very reasonable. And I don't know if it's just the timing or how the how the companies uh work their schedule, but this seemed very, very reasonable for us.
Definitely definitely good. We've identified this and and um it's getting taken care of. It's just another reason why it's a good thing that we're building a new public works facility.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now, obviously, people have been working there for decades, but is this the type of material where, as long as it's not disturbed, it's not a like ongoing? It's not an exposure risk.
Yeah, uh it it they refer to that in the industry as friable or not friable, so friable be would become airborne. Non-friable is typically just a just, it just exists there, but it's in a more safe format. Um, because most of the asbestos that we have are is tile work. Generally, it's 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 not it's not disturbed.
Sure.
And and quite frankly, there's there's not very much asbestos in this tile over the years. It's it's gotten less and less and less. But we do have some. We have some in the building that I work out of, and we have some in a cou- a couple of the adjacent buildings, so we'll try to get that handled. Uh, the only other asbestos was in the uh around the windows and one of the buildings to the to the east of us. And and that is completely non-friable, so it it's all relatively safe as we work out of the building now, so.
Good.
I would move to authorize the city manager to enter into contract for asbestos abatement services with Dirty Ducks LLC for five thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D, review and possible action to authorize city manager to enter into a contract for electric relocation services with We Energies. Mr. Williamson.
So this is another one of those unknown expenses as we go through the design process. We, you know, is as far as We Energies was concerned, um this particular uh part of the project pertains to the Fireside Dinner Theater. Their uh electric is supplied partially through through our property. There they have a a large transformer that exists uh on our property that then feeds an adjacent uh fireside building and then loops into the existing fireside theater. Um, on the twenty-eighth uh of March this year, uh we entered into a contract to design the public works facility with Angus Young. Um, and as part of this process, uh the relocation of the services was was planned and designed. We partnered with We Energies, met with them several times on site, also met with the Klopsak family because it did pertain to their property, um and made sure everyone was well aware of what was was being planned and how it was um going to be executed. Um, the department met with these representatives uh in in October and November, and we finalized the plans um with our our architect prior to obviously going to bid for the the actual final plan set. Uh, We Energies completed their design for this relocation and provided the department with a cost estimate and a sketch map, which is included in your packet. Unfortunately, we can't bid this project. This is something We Energies owns the facilities, so they tell us how much it costs to move them. Um, which they proposed three thirty-three thousand four hundred and two dollars and twenty cents. Um, and part of their scheduling process and part of their how they do business is that that those funds have to be paid prior to scheduling the work, prior to them performing the work. Um, so the cost, uh this particular locate relocation, again, was unknown until now. Um, again, wasn't specifically budgeted, but uh we did have that three hundred thousand budgeted in the two thousand and twenty-three Capital Improvements Fund. And again, uh a portion of that was levied. The other portion uh will come as a reimbursement of the two thousand and twenty-four borrowing. Um, and within this project line item, we do have uh we do have some money available for this for this uh this work to be completed. So staff is recommending uh the city council authorize payment to We Energies uh for the electric service relocation for the Fireside Theater. Um, and the and and the electric supply lines for the existing public works office, uh not to exceed thirty-three thousand four hundred and two dollars and twenty cents.
Let me get a question more for uh the clerk or at um. Does fun that we're using this out of, it's still looking plenty sufficient for any future items we may have yet?
Right, so so this was for uh the design of the building, and I think the, I know that the design of the building came in under budget. And I'm I'm looking at the account now, and it looks like we uh had spent uh as of the end of November about two hundred and nine thousand dollars uh from that account. So there are sufficient funds. We're we're not finished with the design project yet, but uh we do, uh we feel that there's sufficient funds available to pay for this.
Okay. As far as scheduling goes, um will it require some downtime, um like outages or?
So when it comes to the Fireside Theater, we'll work with them, we'll notify them, and the only the only portion of that facility that will go down is the is the building that's north of our Quonset or south of our Quonset hut. If that is there, there's a they have a storage area in there, and I believe there's a a rehearsal section in that building, but they'll be made aware of it, that the actual dinner theater itself will not go down as part of this process.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to enter into into a contract for electric relocation services with We Energies for thirty-three thousand four hundred and two dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item E, review and possible action related to the purchase of a replacement graphic display controller from Memorial Memorial Park Lift Station. Mr. Christensen.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so our Memorial Park Lift Station is our largest lift station in the city. We have three lift stations. Um, this is a four-pump lift station that collects wastewater from the entire pretty much north uh north-northwest side of the city. Uh, brings it all the way down to a lift station next to Memorial Park, the Little League Park, everybody calls it. Um, that is a four-pump lift station. It has two wells. Um, normal electrical breakers and starters and all those kind of things, but also the controls there. Um, there's a pro- programmable logic controller that controls the pumps. That is working just fine. Um, but our connection to that programmable logic controller is the uh graphic display. So the graphic display is a ten-inch screen, look, it's much like a touchscreen, except that it is also an industrial computer in itself. Um, what you see on the the screen, they have multiple di- multiple displays that show, you know, when the pumps are running, the the order of the the order the pumps run in, any alarms, all those things. There's, you know, again, multiple pages of screens that we can toggle through to look at on that. Um, that's all programmed in. Um, unfortunately, the old model that we have there, we um we had previously uh had to replace that once before, and we were able to just move the program, just download it on the computer, upload it to the new display. Um, that is not possible this time around. There's been several generations of of improvements in those displays, so we we have to have complete programming again for that, which is included in this cost. Um, so unfortunately, no parts available for the one that failed. Um, so we are looking at having to replace that with a new ten-inch graphic display. Um, we use L W Allen Altronic as our sole supplier for the utility for our all our programming and controls and SCADA. Um, Water Department also uses them um the same. They're in Madison, um close by. They've been a great company for us to work with over the years and responded to numerous, numerous emergency calls from us in the middle of the night over the years, and they've done a, you know, great job with us. Um, and, you know, they are really the only local anywhere anywhere close to local company that does this kind of work. That would be able to respond in emergencies like that. Um, so um we recommend uh the replacement uh cost of nine thousand three hundred and two dollars to purchases from L W Allen Altronic's from Madison. Um, and any questions you'd have on that? I'm happy to answer.
Seems kind of like a cut-and-dry one. It's it is not too exciting.
No, wish we had alternatives, but you we really don't, so.
Understood, and we have money in the account to pay for it, fortunately, so. I will move to approve the purchase of replacement graphic display controller for Memorial Park Lift Station for nine thousand three hundred and two dollars from Altronic's Control Systems.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, miscellaneous. Tonight we have none. Item twelve, claims appropriations and contract payments. Review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payment.
I move to approve the list of verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorized Payment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
This is me.
This is a roll call.
We've we've gone so well, not having any. Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilman Les Koher?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, the city council may consider a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to State Statute nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment promotion compensation, performance evaluation data of any public cert- public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is concerning a nomination for the city manager to participate in a merit pay program.
Point of clarification, is it one C or one E? It's listed both ways in the packet. I'm just curious. Do we do we know which one? The State Statute.
I only have one in front of me, but.
Yeah, I think the the C is correct, but let me just verify that real quickly. Hold up the statute. C, considering employment promotion compensation performance evaluation data? Okay, yeah, that would be C. Thank you for notating that.
With that, I would move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute nineteen point eight five one C to consider nomination the city manager for a merit pay program.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilman Les Koher?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll move into closed session. We do ask any-
We will move into closed session. We do ask any students if you need signatures. You can obtain those. We do have to vacate the council chambers. You're welcome to continued conversations in the lobby. Thank you.
Omar, if you wait till this is all over, which won't be much longer, I will gladly discuss your issue with you. I see what it looks like too, like there's looks like a recommended motion with a recommended motion to that, but.
You've already done the first one?
Alrighty, then let's. I could I could use a motion.
Approve the nomination of the city manager for merit pay program.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.